Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming to our meeting. I will make a motion to reconvene and open session at 7 o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will also make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the May 22nd, 2019 executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call Dr. McGee.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Would you please join me in standing for a moment's silence in the fudge booth? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Father, which extends the honor, the nation, unto God, indivisible, with liberation and justice for all. Is this, yes. Roll call Dr. McGee.
Chairman Porche.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nato.
Here.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Here.
Is there someone from Poh tear Citizens Campus making a statement tonight or a comment?
Good evening. I'm Melissa Moniz, Principal of Brad Poh tear Citizens Campus. So, community is really important to us on our campus. We do lots to try to involve not only our students, our teachers, and our family, but we a lot of times go out into the community, do things throughout the school. So, this video is just a little snapshot about the community.
Thank you very much about the new day. How can I see a paper I see during class? If I already taught here come for you this meeting to let it off.
How can you present about your favorite item in our class? Also, when you want to learn.
Friday is supposed to happen next week if we do.
That's been a really good one. Now we're going home and he said, "Great, so you know what's going on in today's time is for that."
Say one. Ready? Alright.
So, it helped me because I wasn't able to walk and I wasn't able to walk well. And like we had an opportunity to see you.
And evolve into a team without.
Yeah. So, we all have practiced. Then we all practice and now we willing to go and I'm confident that we did this school and I asked him, "You enjoy it?" He said, "Yeah." It's become my friend. It's up to the pieces and I like that.
Now it's time for the shout out. Drum roll. And it's going to go to Kalani for playing with me every session. Anyway, this is from anonymous. It's an anonymous shout out. And he's not. Well, then he's waiting on us. He's got to back that up. Alright, let's see. Alright, let's see. This one goes to Gerardo. Wait for it to come to my back. Let's wait another anonymous one. No, we don't know. Anonymous is an anonymous. Oh, I think I think I just gave it away. And the last one, let's see. Good. And let's see. Well, he's not here for three days and he'll do it tomorrow, right? So, it's to Christopher for always having my back. He's been with me outside like the best friend. Another anonymous one. Alright, my friend, let's see. Let's shout out tomorrow. Maybe think about something that someone does before you shout out. Ready to go in the basket.
Okay, so today is a beautiful day, so we're going to be heading outside. In a minute, you're going to go get your stuff. Everything you need to be ready and prepared. Your staff sign, your rest, if this is to see you. And we're going to head outside. What is this speech made you every single day? So, it's really important to you, smile in the manner because we want to show the kids from school what probably they enjoy. And we also want to make sure we're smiling again. Like, "Good morning." And we want to go to the conference before the school. And then we come on campus and see your beautiful faces and you're smiling. It can turn their whole day around. You want to make sure we say, "Good morning." Welcome to school. Have a great day. Always do the smiles in a good way, correct? Yeah.
Well, safety patrol is to keep the children safe, making sure their days are always happy. Even if they were around, boom, to camera. And if it's me, that's my job, isn't it? Whatever children pass by me, I always say, "Kibboli."
We have to smile. This is a great community building. And it's not only building community with each other, but also building connections both inside and outside the classroom. And we're doing part of our internship program out here in the front yard.
I think the state community is really important to behind my students and all of the community here at Poh tear Citizens Campus.
Is there anyone who'd like to address the school committee? Please come forward to the podium, stay in the hangman address, please, full record.
Good evening. Dr. Parkington, encyclopedia's president. I'd like to bring up this evening the Greek author, Homer, who wrote The Odyssey. And in last 14 months, we've had a very long odyssey trying to settle a contract with teachers and paraprofessionals in Wensacot. And this evening, we had a vote on that long way of contract. And I'm happy to report that both the teachers and the paraprofessionals supported the leadership of the WTG and accepted or ratified that contract this evening. It's hopeful and I'm hoping that I understand you correctly that in closed session, you may have the fact affirmed that also, and if that's the case, then we will be lifting our work to rule tomorrow morning at the beginning of school and we can finally get back to the business of educating the best students in Rhode Island. And I'm very thankful and honored to have worked with this school committee group who was thrown into a situation that was probably very difficult for them because it started with the mayor, who in my opinion, in my opinion. Thank you. Then in my opinion, it was not really effective in the end.
I'll just continue. I thought the mayor was fairly effective with what we did. This group, I acted with honor and was always very true. It was easy for us to trust the other side of this particular. That's very important in a negotiation. And I don't think we would have gotten done, I realize it was a very long time, but I don't think we would have gotten done if we were still with the mayor. So, while that may not be politically correct, I commend you and I thank you and I'm glad that this long odyssey has in fact completed.
Having been part of this journey as well, sometimes I felt we were in between Scylla and Corridus, but we got there and it was at times difficult, but we always had the best intentions to work to provide the teachers with the best contract possible at what we could afford. We were honest in showing you our numbers and we heard what the teachers were saying and we were trying to do the best for them, always keeping our children in mind. And I would like to publicly thank, I'll start with our negotiation committee. And joining me on that committee was Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier, who worked, both Dr. McGee and Mr. Perrier worked 15 months on this, working on numbers, providing schedules that we all needed and never losing hope, losing faith that we'd get there. I want to thank Paul Louver, the fiscal advisor. I want to thank my vice chair, Don Burke, John Ward, a city councilman, and Dr. Janet Sullivan, and Donald Don Morel. And I want to thank Sarah Rappo, our attorney, who really was our chief negotiator. But I also want to thank members of the former committee, including Soren Seale, who's the past chair of the school committee, Richard Fagan, who was the councilman, he's a former councilman, and Attorney Charlie Ruggiero. You know, they did the best with what they had. And as you know, we went from appointed to elected and that caused a lot of transition. I mean, we had to get up to speed. We had to really learn what had been done. And frankly, the folks that worked with us on the contract really, really did a great job. And I also want to acknowledge the hard work of the Guild, the Wensacot Teachers Guild Contract Negotiation Team. Let's remember, this is not a one-sided contract. This took two parties to try to get there and try to resolve this, knowing that teachers needed more, needed more funds. They had been neglected and the union acknowledged the fact that we didn't have the money. It wasn't coming. I mean, this doesn't, as we know, couldn't get blood out of the stone and we did the best we could. But I want to acknowledge first the officers of the Guild Negotiating Team, including Mr. Parkington as president, the executive vice president, Roxanne Carey, the Wensacot High Vice President, Anthony Cosentino, the elementary vice president, Robin Crane, the middle school vice president, Robin Murphy, the power vice president, Barbara Rosanian, the reporting secretary, Jean Cathy Tumini, the treasurer, George Morris. In addition, I want to acknowledge their committee members of Glenn Wovair, Charlene Goven, Nancy Cruzera, Suzanne Ross Walker, and Kit Myers. I think it's been, we want to say a labor of love. It was at least the labors of Hercules at time. It was difficult, but we finally got there and I'm very happy to hear that work to rule is going away. So again, congratulations to both parties. Is there anyone else that would like to address the school committee? If not, Dr. McGee, recognitions and announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently, the Wensacot Education Department received a very generous donation of $5,000 from Mr. Louis R. Levely's estate. This amount represents a specific bequest pursuant to his last will and testament and is to be used for the expansion and maintenance of the reference materials collection at the Wensacot High School Library. For those of you who may not know, Mr. Levely retired in 1990 from the Wensacot Education Department after serving 33 years as both a librarian and a coordinator of media services. So, we are very, very fortunate for his very generous donation. On behalf of the Wensacot Education Department, and most importantly, our students, we thank Mr. Levely along with his family, who are actually here this evening. If they would kindly stand so we could recognize you. His kind contribution helps us ensure that our students are equipped with the educational resources to be successful in school. And again, thank you so much, members of Mr. Levely's family. We appreciate it. The National Foundation for Governors Fitness Council in the state of Rhode Island has selected the Poh tear Citizens Elementary School to become a Don't Quit with Champion School. They've recognized Poh tear Citizens School as a leader in physical education and wellness as they strive to improve its fitness offerings and wellness. Having said this, the school has been awarded a state-of-the-art fitness center. This fitness center will feature premium strength training and cardio fitness equipment. The award also includes the design, delivery, and installation of the equipment. Congratulations to the Poh tear Citizens School on being one of three schools statewide to receive the Don't Quit Fitness Grant. I know Mrs. Moniz and Mrs. Kennel are here from Citizens Poh tear. They work very hard on attempting to procure this grant and we appreciate all of your efforts. And the students of Citizens Poh tear are very well deserved for this $1,000 grant. So, it's going to be wonderful for the campus and Citizens Poh tear. Jim Corwin of the Rhode Island School Recycling Club thanked the Wensacot Education Department for helping coordinate their recent food scrap audits within the schools for their study to better understand food waste in Rhode Island. They recognized our administrators, kitchen, and custodial staff at each school for their efforts in helping with each site visit for this order. As they reach out to other school districts for their study, they will recognize Wensacot schools as leaders in addressing wasted food. Based on their audit, it has been estimated that our food scrap diversion to Blue Heaven Farms represents approximately 80 tons of food waste annually from reaching the landfill in Johnston. They will be featuring this in their final report to the Rhode Island Attorney General's Office and on their webpage as a best practice that will hopefully be emulated by other schools in Rhode Island. On Monday, May 20th, this past Monday, myself, Chairman Porche, Vice Chair Burke, and Mrs. Kadeskis had the honor of attending the Rhode Island and the National Honor Society induction ceremony for our graduating seniors. We had 34 students who were inducted into the National Honor Society and 28 who were inducted into the Rhode Island Honor Society. Wonderful evening. This event, this Honor Society induction ceremony really begins the end of year process for all of the celebratory events that we have for our graduating seniors. And again, it was just a wonderful experience to be there with our incredible students and their supportive families. This morning, I had the opportunity, the pleasure of addressing the graduating seniors. It was their senior launch day. Each year, Wensacot High School holds this launch day where they recognize the accomplishments of their seniors, where they're going to be either attending their post-secondary education or those that are entering the military or those that are entering the workforce. So, that was a great event this morning at Wensacot High School. On April 17th, the Wensacot High School AP class, AP English class students, along with their teachers, Mrs. Gerardo, Mrs. Armstrong, and Mrs. Benjamin, joined the Wensacot Harris Public Library Book Club members in a lively, intelligent discussion of the 2019 Reading Across Rhode Island book, "What the Eyes Don't See," by Dr. Mona Hannah Atisha. Margaret McNulty, Assistant Director of the library, said, quote, "These young adults are inspiring and proud of their dedication to learning and the knowledge that these students and teachers bring forth." Some announcements of some upcoming events. Tomorrow, Thursday, we will be kicking off our third annual senior walk in which our high school graduating seniors will hop on buses and they will be taken to the elementary schools that they attended here in Wensacot and they'll also be coming to the middle schools as well. That is an event that has just really taken off in the three years that we, for the two years that we've done this. The teachers in the elementary schools and the middle schools are just so excited and thrilled to see their former kindergarteners, first grade, second grade, third grade students. And it's also wonderful for the students at our elementary schools because you should see their eyes when you see the seniors walking down the hall. All of the classes are either standing or sitting at the hall, lighting the halls with the signs that the students and the teachers made. And it really is a sense of true pride here at the Wensacot Education Department. So, that starts tomorrow. The buses leave the high school at approximately 9:15 and they arrive to the elementarys at about 9:30 and then they'll arrive at the middle schools at approximately 10:30. The Wensacot High School Collage Concert is also going to be tomorrow night, the 23rd, that's going to be at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at Wensacot High School. On May 28th, the Music Awards will begin at 7:00 PM also in the auditorium at Wensacot High School. On June 3rd, at 6:00 PM, the Wensacot High School Sports Awards Night will be conducted. On June 4th, the very special event at the end of the year, the Wensacot Area Career and Technical Center Awards Night will be held at 6:30 at Wright's Farm Restaurant in Harrisville, Rhode Island. On June 5th, our Senior Awards Night will occur at 6:30 also at Wensacot High School Auditorium. Culminating with June 7th, which is going to be the graduation date at 4:00 PM at Barry Field, weather permitting. Hopefully, they'll be due today and we'll have our graduation out on Barry Field. And then next, on May 24th, from 9:00 to 10:30 PM at both middle schools, Generation Citizen will hold its very first civics day. Students will present projects that they've been working on, which include bullying, drug abuse, school lunches, and many, many more. On May 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, that's tomorrow night, at Philanova Middle School next door, we will hold a physical education family night, which is in collaboration with the American Heart Association, the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, and Sudexel Food Services. Students along with their families and community members are invited for a family night of fun, physical education games, student presentations, and a healthy dinner. And with that, Mr. Chairman, my report is finished.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any comments for the recognitions and announcements? I'll make a motion to receive and place on father recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to move out of order. The first item of new business, the discussion approval to issue decision approving or rejecting tentative agreements with the teachers and paraprofessionals of the Wensacot Teachers Guild. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call Dr. McGee.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the approval or rejection of tentative agreements with the teachers and paraprofessionals of the Wensacot Teachers Guild. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're discussing it. Are there any additional comments regarding this?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I guess I want to add to what you said earlier, just the great excitement that we finally have a contract. You know, we talked about 14 months, but I take greater joy in the fact that as a committee, we have worked less than five months to make this happen. So, I think our efforts have really brought some great progress because we had conversations and listened, we compromised, and we could make adaptations. And I think we worked for the best interest of the Wensacot Education Department and the teachers. And I'm excited because really, not only is this a contract for the teachers, but it's also a contract for the students. And I'm thrilled that work to rule ends tomorrow. So, it's a great day. It's a great day. This school committee can take some pride in it. The Wensacot Teachers Guild can take some pride in that we've come to this. And we are in good shape hopefully for the next two years. You may not, some of us may be still here, have a few businesses, there may be new faces. But I'm just excited and I want to share your comments, your chairman, Porche. Thank you.
I'll just add one thing before I go for the meeting. Fiscally, we can afford this, the amounts that we're giving. We are not going to put the city in bankruptcy. We are not going to decimate the schools in terms of our budget. We've worked very hard, especially Mr. Perrier, along with our committee, to really work the numbers to make sure we could afford his contracts. So, I'm very happy too that this contract is not only for the teachers, the paraprofessionals, it's also for the parents and the students of our district. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman. May I? Of course, Dr. McGee. Thank you, thank you. I too would like to just comment about the process. You know, as you stated earlier, Mr. Perrier and myself were a part of this process from day one. It was a very long and, you know, challenging and difficult. We had our own doubts. But I want to thank Mr. Parkington and I want to thank his negotiating team for working with us. And as I said, it wasn't always easy, but I think there was always, we always had respect on both sides for each side. And that definitely makes it a much better environment when you're trying to negotiate out of the contract. I also am just thrilled, as you said, Mr. Burke, for, not only for teachers and staff, paraprofessionals, but for our students and for our parents and for our community as a whole. Work to rule was not easy. And in the end, the children were the ones that suffered and I'm just thrilled that we have come to an agreement and we're all moving forward. And I see a very bright future for the district. I would also say that with respect to the contract, which was agreed, it was what the school department could afford. And, you know, I would have loved to have given teachers and parents and the other bargaining unit more money. However, it is what we can afford within our budget. So, I want to thank, again, I want to thank the union and the paraprofessionals and the members of the negotiating team. And I want to thank the former school department negotiating team and the current negotiating team for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Let's take a vote to approve both the teachers and the paraprofessionals' contract. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Let's go onto the approval minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the open session minutes of the May 8th, 2019 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections, adjustments? Okay, non. Roll call, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Onto the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss, approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any? Are there any, any school committee member who want to take anything out of order or discuss any items within the consent agenda? If there are none, roll call, vote, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Let's go on to the school committee reports. We'll start with Health and Wellness Subcommittee. Vice Chair Burke or Mrs.?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Wellness Committee met last on May 13th, and we are in the process of discussing and finalizing our food service bid. We are almost there. We have a few things to take care of with the state, but at our last meeting, we explored the two bids that were presented to us, and we're ready to make a final decision. So that was a very effective meeting. Also at this time, we also created and discovered an evaluation tool that we will be using throughout the schools, and we are going to recommend, I don't think we've officially done it yet, but we're going to recommend that the principals of each school have oversight on this evaluation tool, which can be done online, and hopefully by the beginning of the school year, every school will go through this evaluation tool. And I think that's, those were the main areas of our meeting. We also talked, again, about, oh, what's that called? Project Alia? We discussed the oil project, the Alia. Mr. Boyd was there to lend some discussion there. And we're also excited about tomorrow night's Physical Education Family Night, sponsored by the American Heart Association and the Rhode Island Health Coalition, which plays a big part, the Health Coalition plays a big part with the Health and Wellness Committee. And our next meeting of the Health and Wellness Committee, which will be the final meeting for the school year, will be on June 10th. It's the second Monday of the month, and we meet in this building in room 124. I believe that covers it all. Mrs. Nato may have some additional items to add.
No, I think you covered it all.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, thank you, ma'am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Donald Burke, Vice Chair, for that report, and I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Health and Wellness Subcommittee Report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go on to the Facilities Subcommittee. There was a meeting on Thursday, May 16th of this month, and we've covered various topics, including we began reviewing the transportation bids. We've had two companies that bid on the contract for a student, Endoram, our existing bus company. They're still evaluating certain aspects of this contract, and we hope we will be bringing that back to the Subcommittee shortly. Is that my correct, Mr. Perrier?
Your presence, Chairman.
Okay. We talked about the elementary school playgrounds. We still have about $100,000 in our five-year plan, and we're looking as to what, and checking with RIDE to see what we can do with the playgrounds, because we have, I think we're working on three of them. So that's, we'll be taking a look at what money still needs to be allocated to that once we know what's left in our budget. We looked at the Career Center, lavatories, water fountains, and 488 appliances. One is done, and the other one we're still working on. The McPhee Administration Building, the heating units have been replaced, as well as the oil. I guess we're going to be going to gas from oil. That's the plan, and it should take about five to six week lead time. So sometime in the middle of the summer, but before the beginning of the school year, all the good folks who have been scattered will come back to the McPhee Administration We talked about Universal 3K in terms of the requirements there, and we're partnering with Head Start, who will run that program, and so initial discussions were made. We talked about the windows and the boiler project at Savoy. The glass have been, the glass company came in and measured the windows, the materials have been ordered, and so that's going to happen. We're going to replace those things during the summer, and certainly the boiler will be replaced before it gets cold, without a doubt. That pretty much covers what the major things we talked about. Our next meeting is June 4th, on Tuesday, June 4th, at 11 o'clock. So if you want to join us, please come. That's all I have. Is there, may I have a motion to receive and place on file the Facilities Subcommittee Report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the financial update. Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you, you have the April 2019 fiscal update for the Wensocket Education Department. Let me talk about some financial highlights. We'll start with the revenues. The Wensocket Education Department has just finished their billing for the first half a year for students attending the Career and Tech from out-of-district locations, and we're actually doing better than anticipated in our revenue line by about $70,000. That's due to increased enrollment over what was anticipated at the start of the year. Also, our rental income is currently projected to be $92,000 ahead of budget. And finally, Medicaid revenue is projected to be about $198,000 in front of budget. Reimbursement through special ed programs continues to be better than what we anticipated. At this time, we currently have a $515,000 transfer booked in from our medical overage account, covering our projected deficit at this time, and that's actually a decrease over the prior month of about $180,000. So at this time, we're contributing less to balance the budget. That's basically what that means right there. We're a little more than half a million dollars in deficit at this point. So we're continuing to kind of put a little caveat on that with the approval of the contract. I think we're already seeing some significant changes to this fiscal update next month as I get the payouts correct and catch up everybody on their salary. None of that's accounted for unless, just so everybody knows, and when we do the May update, I'll definitely bring in more detail as to what's happened there. On the expenditure side, our regular salaries are 1.85 billion under budget. That's going to actually significantly change next month, because during the budget process, we did hold some money aside for these projected raises that we're going to be finally paying off. We've had an improvement in medical expenses. We picked up about $200,000 over the prior month. Right now, we're about $1.1 million over budget. The last few months, we've actually done quite well on medical. We have had a bit of a decrease over these last couple of months. Hopefully, we can finish the year strong and continue to pick up as we get closer to June 30th. At this time, due to the origins of medical, we still haven't booked any O-PED transfer for this year, so that $525,000 is off the table. Our out-of-district tuitions have crept back up a little bit over the last couple of months. Right now, we're $1.07 million over budget, and again, it's been a small increase over the last one, about $30,000. And transportation has actually gone up as well. We needed to make an adjustment to our purchase order for the state to make sure we have enough money on it to close out the year. We added about $237,000 to that purchase order for statewide transportation when RIDE arrived, to make sure that we have enough on FPO to cover expenses for the remainder of the year. And finally, for this projection, HVAC is on pace to be $259,000 over budget. That's kind of dipped a little bit as well, because as we anticipated, HVAC repairs have slowed down due to the weather improving. And finally, at the end here, we have an $887,000 overall deficit for the general fund, and it's decreased slightly, again, from our marked projection by about $2,000. So if anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
If there are none, I'll make a motion to receive on, accept and receive on file a fiscal update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the website update. Mr. Natariani.
So we're currently moving ahead to the way to design the website is now, in terms of the school committee agenda and backup materials. We're working on a template that will be easy to use. It'll allow you to click on the meeting date, and when you do, it'll come up, show you the agenda, and it'll present whatever backup materials are available for that agenda to the public. So that's something that should, by the next meeting, you should have a template with probably this page's agenda and backup materials in the next meeting's meeting, agenda and backup materials, and then just over a period of time, we'll backfill previous meetings. We'll do that for the, all of the regular meetings, and then we'll do that for the special meetings, and then we'll do that for the subcommitments. It's going to take a little bit of time, because it's physically, you have to copy and copy paste materials into the website, but we will have a template ready for the next meeting, and again, it should be, it'll be easy to use. You'll need to click under our leadership, go to the committee agenda and backup, present your page where you've been in social media, recording, browsing, whatever materials you want.
I agree with you. If we focus on, of all current meetings, that's what people are going to want to see, especially with the next meeting, given a lot of the areas here, it puts the school committee up in this time. So this way, they can go right to the website and find it rather than going through a labyrinth of clicking and not being able to get there, where we would go through all of it.
Yes, and then just while on the topic of the leadership, the website also on the leadership has school committee meeting videos, video recordings that take place, posted on YouTube for the duration, and we're allowed to record, and there is also the new school committee dates, that's also posted information.
Great.
So members of the public can get all of that information by going around main page at wensockethighschool.com and putting them on leadership.
Excellent. That's the whole point, is we want to make it as simple as possible for everyone, to be able to just point and click and get the information they need. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to accept and receive on file the technology, the website update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have unfinished business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the transgender policy for second passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any further comments or discussion items on this policy? If there are none, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the middle school handbook for second passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments, additions? If there are none, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes. Now, we'll go into new business. We'll look at item number two. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the high school handbook for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments, discussion on this handbook? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Now, we'll go into new business. We'll look at item number two. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the high school handbook for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments, discussion on this handbook? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
The next item is discussion. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 19-11, School Fund Service Program. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Perrier.
I would ask that the school committee could table this item for the next meeting. I was hopeful that we would have our full review done with RIDE by the time this meeting rolled around, but we're still working through the approval process with RIDE. There's nothing alarming here. It's just a normal process that RIDE goes through when an RFP is awarded for food service. RIDE is very involved in the process, the bidding process, so we'll have that wrapped up for the next meeting, and I think it would be better for you to all approve it after RIDE has given its final blessing.
Could someone make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table this item.
How seconded?
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Tabled to next time. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve amendments to the Special Education Local Advisory Committee's CLAB bylaws.
Second.
Is there a second? Comments? Mrs. Kadeskis, would you lead a discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mariana Kerkowski apologizes. She's the current CLAB chair. She didn't see her. Her mother is currently visiting from Poland, and I told her to spend her time with her mother, and that I would describe the effect of the amendment is. It's a very simple amendment. We're simply adding to the list of officers available in the CLAB, in addition to chair, vice chair, secretary, treasurer, there in the event we ever have any money. But we're also adding a position of parent advisory council representative or PACT representative in an effort to revitalize the PACT. The PACT has asked all of the school parent organizations to include a PACT representative as part of their office, or PTO, PTA, as well as the CLAB has been asked to make this amendment to their bylaws. CLAB approved the amendment to the bylaws at our meeting, and now it's to be forwarded for approval and signature.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the chief operating officer's contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Bojek. So as you and the committee know, recently, the committee signed the union contracts throughout the district. At the last school committee meeting, the school committee approved the combining of the technology directorship with the facilities, security, and transportation into the chief operating officer. So I felt as though it was an appropriate time for the committee to vote on Mr. Natariani's position and this contract, I should say, as he's not even employed.
We spoke quite a bit about that last, at the last meeting, and now, now we can just say a few words. I think we're very fortunate to have an individual as Mr. Natariani, who has both the experience in handling technology, handling facilities, and has done bulk jobs now for 10 months. We're very lucky to be able to combine those two functions into one person at this point. At a later date, you don't, we are not that fortunate to have him, and we can't find someone else to fill both roles in the group, we'll have to split them. But right now, I think we're, I'm very excited to see that we can have Mr. Natariani be able to fill in that position. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Does this contract involve also the job description for the position? Can you put that through?
It should be in place, yes.
Is there a contract? Job description?
The job description is usually not included in the contract. The job description was approved.
Yeah, we saw it last time.
All right.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion for, to discuss policy development for our school lunch program payments. Is there a second?
Second.
Children are all aware of some school districts who have had real issues with shaming for school lunches, and I could be wrong, but I think it was the Warwick School District that is taking away their sunflower butter slash jelly sandwiches off the caterer, off the table, literally, and actually focusing on letting children, our students, their students, go through the line and choose what they want, and they're separating lunches for their students with the payment plans that they're developing with the parents. And I think this is something that we want to take a look at our policy and see if we So I'd like to send this, and we'd love to see this, our school lunch program payments, and I hope all of our school lunch program go back to the policy committee, maybe invite the chairman of Sivexa or the president of Dodge to sit on all this, so we can come up with a policy that makes sure that we have no shaming, that children are not, I'd like to see that they don't have to eat a cheese sandwich when they're going through the line and they're told to go back in line to pick something else, and then work onto some plan as to handle the Lincoln House. That's what I'd like to see done. Any other discussions on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Just my recollection is that we looked at this two years ago, which we have in front of us, and we looked at it with the intent to try and eliminate that shame.
Yeah.
One of the ways that we did that, maybe that's not the final way, is that the proverbial cheese sandwich, we put it on menus, and I've been told that students sometimes select the cheese sandwich, not because, you know, there's any sense of shaming. So, you know, I think we need to look at where we made this previous policy work, and has there been any situations that we see in other school districts that have warranted us to find some problems with this? So maybe again, as you suggest, it does go to the policy, but, you know, just, we did try to address it at some point. It's not like it's been sitting out there, but we did try to address it, and that's it.
And I really commend the policy committee that really worked on this, and I know we approved it, but when I think about a kid, three or four kids going through the line, and one is told, out of four friends, one is told, by the way, you're Lincoln, you have to go get a cheese sandwich, even though it's on the menu, at that particular point in time, that child, that student out of four, with his friends, might feel pretty bad. So I think it's worthwhile to be moving this, because other districts are looking at it, and maybe the cheese sandwich is great, it's on the lunch menu, but if I'm going through the line and I want pizza, and I'm told I gotta cheese, a cheese sandwich, maybe I'm not even happy. And if I'm with my friends, they're gonna feel even more. So I think it's worth looking at, and look at it for most of that week, so we'll send that to policy.
Chairman, just one more question on that. So is there, given that it exists today, when we see the cheese sandwich, I guess basically to quantify for us, what would that dollar amount be should we give freedom of choice in maybe the math equation and help influence the policy? Not that you would ever want to let that happen, but it could help if certain members don't want to move to that direction if they see that it's affordable for the city. I would just ask if there's data available?
And one of my thoughts is that, from what I understand, I could be wrong, that there is still some, a significant amount of food, it's significant, maybe wrong, but a certain amount of food may be discarded of the gathering of each meal. So if that's happened, and maybe that's one of the reasons, I'm thinking of why not let the each student choose? Because let's remember, if they have, if the kitchens have to get rid of food, maybe our absenteeism is causing some of that, because you figure, I got so many kids in the new school, so I'm preparing excellent lunches, if a bunch of them don't show up, then I've got a lot of leftover food. So I think all of that needs to be looked at, not only the shame, but everything in our program, and I think it's worthy of revisiting. Anyone else? Mrs. Kadeskis.
You know I have something to say.
Of course, I was hoping.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to let everyone know that it is on the policy subcommittee agenda to discuss the lunch policy amongst some other policies around this agenda. It's on our very long list of to do's, but it's risen to the top. And it kind of rose to the top based upon some other information that I learned as we were talking about the outstanding balances, and I learned that apparently the seniors at the high school are informed that if they have a lunch balance, they will not receive their diploma. They walk the stage, but they receive an empty folder, and they cannot receive their diploma until that balance is paid in full. That's what I was told by a former student who'd graduated, so I did some inquiry, and it was confirmed by Mr. Henderson that that is the policy. So if a student has any money to suggest, so they do not receive their diploma, if that's not shaming, then what is? And there needs to be a better way, and that will certainly be addressed when we need a policy.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Kadeskis, I had a conversation with the high school in the last meet, and that will no longer occur.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
One second, thank you.
Of course.
The policy that Mrs. Kadeskis spoke about is not unique to Unsockit. It is a common policy in most high schools. I can't say for Sherman either, but I can say definitely in Massachusetts. It is one of several factors that will influence whether students get their diploma, library fees, books that all of the teachers, but capital period payments. Capital power, now that doesn't make it right, I'm just trying to say that Unsockit's policy is not unique, and obviously maybe there's a better way to solve it, but just so you know, it's not just for Unsockit, it is, I believe, throughout the state, and I know definitely throughout Massachusetts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke, anyone else?
May I respond just a second? I basically just wanted to say, I mean, that may very well be true, but essentially the difference is some of those responsibilities are students', school lunch money is typically not the student's responsibility, it's the parent's responsibility, and I think it's penalizing the children for the lack of their parents forcing them to pay the lunch money in advance or sending their children to school with lunch money. But my other concern is, if you read this lunch policy that we currently have, the information about diplomas is not in there, and today we have the high school handbook on for first passage. I read every single word of that handbook this year, this day, today, all hundred five pages, there's absolutely no mention of it in there. And that in itself is a problem. If you want it to be a policy, you can make it a policy, but you need to make sure people are aware that's a policy. And right now, there's no way the parents to know that, and it's my understanding with some students are learning that immediately before graduation, that they're not receiving their diplomas, and that's why I think it's unfair. If we want that to be a policy, that's fine, but we need to formalize it and let people know that that is what it's going to be.
Mrs. Kadeskis, I believe that that shouldn't be a policy.
I agree.
To penalize students for lunch money. I think that has, glad you, Dr. McGee, spoke with Mr. Henderson, and I think definitely we should be penalizing our students. We're here for the students, and yet I can't afford lunch, my parents aren't paying me, I can't get my diploma after all that hard work, that is new to me. So I'm glad you're looking at this and make sure that that's not in there, in our policies. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss policy development for field trips. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe it's RIDE, or the last commissioner, who's put through its place some stringent, I don't know if you want to call it policies, with regards to field trips, in terms of if a child, if a student can't afford it, you can't, they can't, the trip can get canceled. And I don't have all the words in front of me, but I think, again, we're for the kids, we're here for the students, and we need to find a way, and there's also limitation how you can fundraise for these field trips. I don't know if this policy, what the prior commissioner came up with was too rigid, but I think we need to look at that in terms of how do we get our children, they want to go on a field trip, they should all go. No child, no student should be prevented from going on a field trip. And so we need to find a way to make sure our children get on, get to the field trip if they so desire. So to me, I'd like to send that back to policy, to the subcommittee, to take a look at that, and maybe tweak it, or make it stronger, whatever we need to do. Is there any other, are there any comments on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
I just, just some information on this discussion about the commissioner's policy. What I read and what I've been told, it was a response that he was giving to a situation in Cituwe High School, and he wrote this response, and some reaction, I think we've heard at a conference.
Yes, we did.
Is that the reaction is that it's just a document. It has completely become a policy of RIDE, I don't believe. It's a document of the previous commissioner, and the discussion is wondering what is the present commissioner are going to do in terms of this discussion about field trips. So, you know, it seems to be an issue that still is up in the air. I think we should address it, we should look at it, but in terms of where it is right now, I don't think it's, it has the weight of a policy at the state. I could be wrong. Is that Mr. Kuba?
It's correct, it's a guidance document, that was issued on our Department of Education.
But oftentimes, guidance documents become policy, it becomes precedent, and I think we need to look at what we want to do with our field trips and how we handle them, so our students can go on field trips. I think you're right, Vice Chair Burke, I think we need to look at it and see what we want to do and how we can protect our children from these field trips, irrespective of a guidance document.
Mrs. Kadeskis, with regard to the field trip policy, we've been discussing with policy subcommittee, we need to tighten up that policy no matter what, whether this guidance stays or goes, so that is definitely on our agenda to discuss, but I don't know if anybody else subscribes to it, but every Wednesday, the commissioner of education releases a friend's memo, an email, and there was mention of it in the most recent email, that there's been question from the districts as to how this guidance is to be applied across the districts, there's a lot of questions. She didn't give any hint as to what her position is going to be, but she did ask the districts with questions to get those questions to RIDE by May twenty fourth, and it's their plan after that date to be able to answer those questions and give the districts further guidance as to how the policies need to be reformed. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think we need to look at our policy, because it needs to be touched on, period, but we may not be able to address those issues until further guidance comes from the commissioner, because her position may be different, may change, it may be more stringent, it may be weaker, but I think, I would suspect it's going to be, it's going to be more stringent, that's my thought, based on what I've heard of her and from her, but I think that at this point, it's up in the air for all the districts, and I think that the fact that she reflected in the commissioner's level this week confirms that.
So guidance is one step away from a policy from RIDE, so I agree, I think we need to look at this, and look at what we're doing, and at least come up with our plan as to what we'd like to do, at least ahead of time, and then we'll deal with what the commissioner has to say. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve, to non-renew the appointed contracts of certain teachers for reason of fiscal exigency and/or consolidation, reorganization. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you have on your Chromebook the, a list of staff, their position in the school that they are employed at, and basically what this is, is this, as you know, the June first, June first is the deadline by which districts can non-renew staff for reasons of fiscal exigency. So that does not mean that some of these folks will not return, but it's just, it's what school departments unfortunately have to do when, when there's, there's an unknown respect to projections for the following year. So if we didn't unfortunately do things like this, then we could be left after June first having more staff than we actually need. So this, this isn't anything out of the ordinary, this is actually really sort of fiscally responsible, maybe responsibility really of the district to make sure that we're not caught potentially, you know, over budget after June first.
So the list that we have, that we actually put in our consent agenda, the list that we have right here, was this set up to identify a certain amount of money that we want to make sure we're covering? Because it's kind of hard to do that when our budget's been in flux. Mr. Periade, shake on his head, no. So I want to make sure that that's not the driving motive here.
No, there isn't a certain total dollar that we're getting to work. Many of the staff are, mostly are staff.
Any other comments? Mrs. Kadeskis?
My only question that I notice about the twenty-one positions listed, at least eleven of them are either directly special ed or related to special ed, I assume special ed and consulting are your type of positions?
Yes, yes, we've had meetings, we've had numerous meetings, we had a meeting about two weeks ago, which included administrators from the secondary level and some directors, Dr. Sullivan and Mrs. Pearl were there as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the committee has some links, there are four links, if you go to the, actually, let me start with coverage of any of your activities first. So that is somewhat of a moot point, as we have an agreement with the teachers' union, so the events that will be occurring from tomorrow on, in the end of the year, we will not have an issue of staff who normally would attend, who won't attend because of the listening of the work tool. So had we not had an agreement, we still had some plans in place for each of those events that would be occurring at the end of the year, so they would have been supervised, but we don't, we don't have to worry about that.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to rescind that vote? The committee voted for these stipends, and we voted...
But it was in case of, it was in case of more coverage. We provided, we provided a cushion in case we needed them. So I don't think we need to rescind because we won't need them. And I would imagine that you're, Dr. McGee, you're going to verify that the coverage is there for all...
Yeah, there was, there was some stipend positions to begin with that, that may be part of some of these activities, for example, graduation, there may, I can't think one hundred percent that there may, have been some staff that are stipend for events like that just prior to stipends that may be approved for the end of year activities, because I'm concerned that there wouldn't be any chaperones or any adults there at those events.
Vice Chair Burke, you brought up a good point, but I think since there is no need, that was the cover in case, because we didn't have a finite number in terms of whom, what, and how many, but we wanted to definitely allocate a certain amount to, to stipends, but it looks like we're...
I have to know, the school being shot, that vacancies are put out there for all the positions, but if there's no need, there would be no vacancies put out there for the positions.
So I withdrew the junior prom vacancy, because I was told I didn't need it, and the only one that's outstanding right now is senior prom, and now that this has happened tonight, we'll vacate that in the morning. So we'll, we'll take that away.
Very good. Mrs. Capwell?
So just to clarify, so that I understand, if a position has been filled, it remains filled irregardless of the fact that we now went through the work tool. So if something was filled and the stipends were an event next week, that still falls through, we don't rescind that, or we do? But we don't have that scenario?
We don't have that scenario, thankfully, I'm seeing that have previously been filled, they've filled those applications prior to that, we didn't have anything yet where anyone was placed for any upcoming event yet, on purpose.
Generally, the events are coming, especially graduation, that's the event that we were looking at, over fifty folks that would have been receiving stipends, but that's going to go away now. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very good. Middle school broadcast, so shortly after the presentation that I had done before the school committee... So shortly after the presentation that I had done before the school committee, after the Rycast scores were released by the department, then I had a conversation with Chairman Porche about comparing the, specifically the seventh grade, so last year's seventh graders at both Villanova and Hamlinville schools, to see if there's a correlation between students in those buildings, if you took their ELA final grade and their math final grade, to see if there's a correlation, to compare their Rycast score. And so what you have here is, you know, four links. So if you go to the first link, which is Villanova ELA Rycast comparison, what you have in the first column is basically the SASID, identifies students through their SASID number. So that doesn't obviously list their name. The second column is English grade seven, and this is, this would be last year's-
Right.
-grade seven students, not the current grade seven students. The third column lists their final grade for the year that they received in their English class. The fourth column lists their, the ELA scale score. So when students take the Rycast, in addition to a proficiency score, which is one through four, the proficiency score is based off of the scale score, basically. So and then, so the important columns to look at would be the last column, which is their proficiency level, which is one through four. One meaning not exceeding, not meeting expectations. Two would be partially meeting expectations. Three would be meeting expectations, and four would be exceeding expectations. So when we look at students who are meeting expectations, we combine three and four, basically, sort of percentage that we use. So if you take the third column, which has the final grade, you compare that to the final, the last column, which is the proficiency, we're looking to see if there's a correlation. So, so for example, the first student, student number two, had a 97 final average for their English class last year. That, that one person scored four, which means they were, they exceeded expectations. If you go down and you look at, so it goes from 97 down all the way through, there are about, just scrolling down, so it goes down to 69 students. So if you look at the bottom, if you take that last student, which is cell number 69, the final grade was an 85, and that student scored the one, the ELA Rycast last year, which would say that that student's not meeting the expectations. So what we've done is we've taken each, as I said, each building. So if you go to the next link-
Well, let's just talk about this. So we're saying out of 69, six, 68, for the cell one, row one, is titled, so you have 68 students. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, about 11 that are ones. So if you're a two, what does that mean again?
Two means that you are partially meeting expectations.
Okay. And three, you're meeting expectations.
Correct.
Okay. So, so many of them are, even though their grades are Bs and As, we still have quite a few who are at best meeting some expectation.
That's right.
So there's still work to be done there.
There, there is. And so if, so you would say, what's the reason? Why do the student who, and this isn't the honor roll, this is, these are just, I thought the better comparison would be looking at math and ELA.
Sure.
Not necessarily showing who made the honor roll, because that can be skewed a little bit. You could have a lower math or ELA grade, but your other grades would boost you up to, you know, being an honor student.
Yep.
So the question is, you know, especially if we're looking at students who scored one, but yet they had a 93 average, end of year average. Why? Why, why are they very successful in the classroom during the course of the school year, and why do they do so poorly on the Rycast? I don't know that there's one answer for that. What I, what I'd like to do next, as, as we now have, have this information, is I'd like to have conversations with the math teachers and the reading, or the math teachers and English teachers at both middle schools to find out, you know, what, what happened here. Now, in some cases, you could say that, well, there are some students that unfortunately don't take the Rycast seriously, and they, they take it and they don't care, and they rush through it. There's a certain percentage of those students. They do exist, but how many of them exist? How many of them, you know, just didn't put an effort into it? I think the teachers might have more of, more information to shed some light onto that. There, or even, and in this first meeting-
Well, I look at this, there's 58 students out of 68 that are two and below. So whatever that costure is, whatever that means, I think you're right. I think we need to have some discussions with teachers, principals, because it'd be nice, we need to know what's lost in this.
You know, when you look at the curriculum, if you take the ELA curriculum, so last year, we did not have a consistent curriculum at the middle schools. The, the teachers used the Common Core standards, and when they created those, when the Common Core standards came out in 2010, teachers created a curriculum that were aligned to the Common Core standards. But it wasn't necessarily a program, and a program isn't, isn't a curriculum. A curriculum is, is made up of the standards, it's made up of any program you might be using, it's made up of the instruction, the type of instruction, all of those, and the assessments. That, all of those make up the curriculum. So I think we've got to look at a variety of things. I think we've got to look at first the curriculum, and as I was saying with the ELA curriculum, we didn't really have a consistent curriculum at our middle schools. This year is, is the first year that our staff were using a consistent curriculum. So, and that makes a difference, because when you don't have a program, then you tend to have teachers who will, who will select resources and materials to try to meet those standards, but there might be different levels of rigor from classroom to classroom. So I think we need to look at that first. The fact that we do, we have created a program, we have a program that we've implemented. I think the next thing that we need to do as we move forward with respect to the curriculum in the district, is we really need to make sure that our teachers understand what the standards are.
Correct.
Because if the teachers don't understand the standards themselves, it's going to be challenging for them to teach the material that's aligned to those standards, because the Rycast is aligned to the Common Core standards. So that's something that we have to do as we move forward next year.
Doesn't that speak to more professional development? We know in the contract, there's language, or there's so many hours they've, they've agreed to do, but it seems to me if they haven't been training, it can't be during school day. It's going to have to be, that professional development is needed if they have to align their teaching to the common, to the standards.
Sure. So, so you're right, so they do need professional development. They can also utilize their common planning time at the middle schools. They have common planning time that's at the end of the day.
How many minutes, but how many minutes is that?
It's, it's a half hour each day, but what we've done in the past, when I, when I was here, what we were doing in the past is we could combine, so instead of having three eight, half hour, one day an hour, and that, that was an agreement that we would, we made with the staff at the time, with the new department. So that's a possibility to, you know, to make that time available so that the teachers can look at the standards and make sure there's an understanding. We can also, we have just been looking at our CRP, which includes Title II. Title II is, is our professional development funds that we, federal funds that we receive, and Mrs. DiRiso and myself have been looking at, at, so this can be included in that. But we, we need to ensure that we're providing the, the training for our staff so that they, they do have an understanding of what those standards are. Just, just using a program, although it provides consistency, it provides common resources that teachers use when they're, you know, when they're teaching the curriculum, it, it doesn't necessarily ensure that they have a full understanding of the standards.
Right. I know you've been speaking about consistency for as long as I've been on the school committee, but on top of that, it's also if the teachers are not teaching the standard, then how can, you can't expect the students to do all of these exams. It's impossible.
Right.
And that's one, while we're looking at scores that are low, and that's the one way you're going to get these scores to go up, is by making sure the students are getting taught the standards.
And just, just to add also, we had had a conversation recently about the, the conference, the workshop that members of the committee had attended a few weeks ago, and at that particular conference, we had folks from the Cumberland School Department. I, I've since had a conversation with Superintendent Cumberland as well as his, his leadership team, and we talked about some of the things that they had implemented there. And one of the things that they said, which, which, you know, we're all agreeing on, is specifically that, is staff have to have an understanding of the standards, they have to be comfortable.
Right.
Otherwise, they're, it's going to be challenging for that department to really truly implement any program you might have that's aligned to the Common Core standards.
If they don't do that, our kids are never going to do any better. I mean, there's only so much, if you're learning a certain way in class, or certain materials, and then you get what an exam that is expected, asking you to do more, or ask questions that you can't, you haven't even taught, how do we all can we do better? How do we do that?
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification of Dr. McGee. The seventh graders took this last year.
Yes.
Was that the first year of the new Rycast?
It was, yes.
Okay, so, so, so one of the ways of looking maybe at, at these numbers is in the context that was the first year that the student sat for this particular test. Now, the problem is to match up what they're going to be tested on with what they're going to be taught. And I think you'll see, even from the experience of Massachusetts, that this takes a few years to measure out and to really understand what is on the test and what, what the curriculum should be to reach that, to reach the subject matter of the test. That's one way to look at these schools, and I just think that's a good piece of information to have.
I think the other thing that we saw in that presentation from Cumberland is they've been dealing with the Rycast test just like we are. They're just as new as we are to that test. And they, they really did well, because I believe that, that, that school district made sure that the standards were met by their teachers, they had plenty of PD, and that's what might have made a big difference. And it's, and it could be what you're talking about, but it's also a combination of students not getting taught the standards. And if we do that, I gotta believe my school, our testing results are going to skyrocket. Because if you know the information, the material, of course you're going to do that. That's, that's my thinking. But I agree with you, Why Shaver, there's more to it, and it's going to take time. But the sooner we get our teachers up to speed with the process and the programs and the standards, then our students are going to learn from that directly.
It's also about expectations and excuses, high expectations and no excuses. I mean, you know, we all, we all know that our, our kids come to us with a lot of challenges. But if, if we use that as an excuse, then we're not going to be successful. If we have high expectations regardless of their background, regardless of their socioeconomic position, if we have those, if we have low expectations, we're not going to increase our proficiency level across the district. We're just not, and we can't, we can't make excuses.
Um, the math, the math scores for Villanova, speak to the same, out of 47 students, 37 of them are twos and below. So it's, it's, it's probably going to be the same thing with Hamlinville, the management.
Yep.
Very similar. So again, what improves these, the middle schools between that point, that we've got to work to make sure that our teachers are teaching standards and they get enough training to be able to do that. Because we can't expect them to do that. It's not instant, it's not instant, pour water, or something, it's not how it works.
That's, unless there are questions.
Anyone else? I need my own board. Make a motion to receive and place on file, superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:27 PM. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you for coming to my meeting and looking at our meeting on Facebook and for the station, wherever, wherever this goes. Wonderful. Great job.